Hello, I'm Donna Rodriguez. Welcome to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q and A format with each candidate, lasting about 30 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to four questions, but that will depend on the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered, or that they would like to add clarification to, at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Jean Coleman, one of the three candidates for the Silver Lake Regional School Committee in the Kingston Town election. Jean, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
Well, let's get right into the questions. Tell me, what do you believe is the role of a school committee member?
All right, well, thank you for asking. The school committee actually has three designated roles, and I'm currently a school committee member serving in Kingston. I have been for five years, and I'm currently the vice chair. The three roles of the school committee member are to set the budget, hire the superintendent, and to set policy for the district. So I believe that in collaboration with other colleagues on the committee, it's important that we all stick to our roles as school committee members and do our best to, I think, fulfill our duties as school committee members.
Excellent, thank you very much. Moving on to the next question, how do you view the role of committee members to balance the needs of their individual town with the needs of the other towns within the district, particularly when the needs might not be in line, or especially in regard to budget decisions?
Right, and that actually is going on right now in the Silver Lake Regional District. Plimpton has a positive budget this year, and Halifax is really kind of struggling this year to fund their school budgets. And in Kingston, we have a very pro-school-budget community, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're meeting all of the needs of all of our students. So in doing so, the towns first are the ones that typically reach out and say, "This is where we need the budgets to come in," and then the school committee members are working to figure out what that means in terms of whether there's going to be budget deficits, or unfortunately cuts, or what programs can be brought into the budget. So this year, I know that Silver Lake had a much more complex budget season this year because they were trying to keep it at a respectable 3.5%, 3%, 3.5%, and Halifax is really struggling. So I think that it's important, as a regional district, to understand the needs of all three towns, and I think that being on the K-6 elementary committee, it's really been eye-opening how our budgets are built, and where the state and the federal government kind of lacks funding for schools. And it's just not a, it's not a simple formula. It's very complex, and the circuit breaker, even fully funded, is only 75%, but that's 75% of an overage amount, and it's-
Could you say, talk a little bit about what the circuit breaker is, just so people understand?
I will. Thank you, and I was hoping I could get into that today, because this is one of those things that I feel like I could almost talk ad nauseam to.
Just in relation to this question?
Right.
Just to define it, you can talk about it later, too.
Of course. The circuit breaker is the funding that the state gives us back for education plans that are over a certain amount of dollars. And in Massachusetts, I believe that amount is between $48,000 and $52,000. That is considered a, like a general education amount for a child, for school spending. And over that, the state will reimburse up to 75% of the costs. So it's, it's complex in that a child could have a $100,000 IEP, and that child's entitled to that education, and the town really ends up paying a large amount towards that child's education. So until we get some of those, I guess, formulas fixed, then it's really hard to look at education as a one-size-fits-all, because it's not. Every child's entitled to a free and appropriate education, and for some, that's a much higher amount than others, and there's, it's really difficult to find that balance when the funding formulas are broken.
Now, within, within the district, beyond, because budget, of course, is a huge issue that you would have to manage amongst the towns within the district, how do you see the best way to, to work in general with other members of the district if you are on this committee, when you might not always, your towns might not always have the same needs?
Right, and I think that that brings up an important point. Sometimes the towns can't always agree, because, for instance, you know, the needs of Plimpton this year aren't, well, their needs are just as high, but their budget is in better shape than Halifax. So how do you say to your constituents in Plimpton, "I'm sorry, you know, we can't do this, even though we could afford it, we have to consider the needs of Halifax and Kingston as well." So it's really, it's complex, I think, listening to all sides of the issue, and especially seeing all of the budget, the numbers. Our administrators have been very good about presenting exactly what the budget looks like and where the figures are, so you can see, this is version one, and if we make these cuts, this is, this is what is coming off. Typically, it's, it's not going to be the reading, writing, and arithmetic. It's going to be those enhancements to our schools, and the things that our children really look forward to going to school.
Okay, thank you. So due to the rising costs of attending college as well, many students are looking to the trades after high school. What are your thoughts on growing and/or expanding the CTE program to address this need in the district?
I love our CTE program, and our introduction to Kingston schools actually came because in 2012, we hosted an exchange daughter from Brazil, and she went to Silver Lake Regional High School as a junior. And one of the days, I dropped her off after her physical or something, and I picked up an application for the preschool program for our then-three-year-old, who's now 12. But I picked it up, and I said, "Oh, I remember this from when I was in high school down in Virginia, we had a preschool program." And so we put him into the lottery, he got accepted, and that was our introduction, really, to the Kingston schools, to Silver Lake, was through the CTE program. And when our son attended, and then our two daughters also attended the CTE program preschool, and they got to do so many fun things. They got to go visit the carpentry program to go make boxes for Christmas presents for parents or grandparents. They got to go visit the kitchen and make desserts, and they got to go trick-or-treating across, you know, the school. It was just, it was such a wonderful program that our children were involved with, and I really think that it was a cool introduction, kind of on the flip side, to those programs, the automotive program. I know that one of my friends mentions all the time, you know, "If, if you have an older car, definitely take advantage of the automotive program for repairs, because you're paying the cost of parts, but you're not paying for the labor, and those children are learning in return." So I think that it's very important that we stay current, like as we move towards, you know, we're in the industrial revolution, the fourth industrial revolution right now, that we stay current with what we're offering, because I know that we now have the CNA program. The kids can come out of high school and go right into a career, and I think that that's extremely important. My husband is a graduate of the vocational high school in Waymouth. He's a carpenter, and I think that it's extremely important to keep our trades at the forefront of what we're offering in our building, so that children do know that they have something that they can fall into if they're looking for something other than college. And I think that our CTE program is strong, and I'd like to see it continue to be a strong program. A few years ago, the superintendent and I attended a school resource officer meeting at the new Plimm and South High School, and the building had just opened up, and some of the offerings there are just incredible. You know, they have a studio that's probably as large as this one. They have a, like, huge bay, it's, I think it's like two floors, the automotive bay, and it's super neat to see that, you know, other schools are offering just as many things as well. There's a bank in their school, there's a cosmetology department in their school, they also have the CNA program. So it's great to kind of see what other high schools have, and see what Silver Lake has as well.
Excellent, thank you so much. How would you manage decision-making when there really is no simple or clear-cut decision to be made, knowing that whatever you decide, some constituents are going to be disappointed or even in complete disagreement?
This is, I think, directly relevant to what we just dealt with the last couple of years through the pandemic. Every decision we made felt like a catch-22. You weren't going to please everyone, and I think that a lot of the time, my decisions, I know, they came out very passionate, maybe even aggressive at times, when I was advocating for the needs of all of our students. And I think the most important thing is that you're looking at all sides of the issue, and you're doing your research. So I sat through an additional, probably 12 hours of health and safety meetings, and additional several subcommittee meetings, where I was really, truly seeing that our schools are safe, we're not seeing school-to-school transmission of the virus, we weren't seeing reasons that our kids couldn't be in school five days a week. And I think that once you have that information, then you just have to present it, and you have to be good at making your argument and justifying, "This is the reason why I'm so passionate about this, and this is the reason that I'm speaking up and speaking out on getting our children back to school five days a week," or removing the masks, so that our youngest students, especially those with speech issues or needs, can see the person that they're learning from, and they can see the mouth, and they can see those words being formed, and just things like that. I think it's, I think it's important to look at all sides of the issue, and then understand that some people are going to disagree with you, and it's, it's part of taking on a role in this kind of position, is to get some negative feedback, or to even have someone vehemently disagree with you. And I'd like to think that I've thought about it in a respectful way. I respect all of my constituents, regardless of whether we agree 100% or not, and I encourage them to reach out to me, especially if there's something that we disagree on, because I'd like to understand where they're coming from, and I think it's important to listen to people.
Thank you. So also, with the challenges of social media in today's world, how will you respond to or manage seeing debate on social media platforms where decisions made by public employees are often discussed or criticized?
It's a good question. I think that we need to take that into consideration to some of the things that our teenagers nowadays are facing on social media. I know that my son is only 12, but several of his classmates have already had situations on social media that are very negative, and it's just not the same as when we were growing up, and it's really hard to kind of, there's, there's no guidebook for how to really go about handling social media with children, and then even as other adults are learning to use social media and trying to get a point across. And one of the biggest, I think, downsides to social media is its tone deaf. Anytime you write something on an internet page, it may not be perceived as you intended it to be. So it's, it's important to then listen and say, "How did I, how did I come across? If, if I actually offended somebody, what did I do wrong?" And then taking the accountability and saying, "Oh, you know, they might have thought that maybe I meant this, when I actually should have probably phrased it this way." And I think that because of that tone deafness, it's easy to kind of jump on each other's words and say, "Well, you're implying this," and that's not always the case. And I think that children are learning from their parents, and they're learning from other members in society, so we need to be careful that what we're putting out there is something that we're proud of, and that we are okay with our children seeing. And I think that just having, like, my son is on some social media platforms, he follows a lot of the Red Sox and the Tampa Bay Rays, and it's funny just to kind of see where some kids trickle to. Meanwhile, my daughters are on Snapchat, and they're putting up their cheer videos and everything else, and I have to look and try to find that balance, saying, "You know, it's, it's a good thing, and it's great that you're connected to your friends, but be careful what you're putting out there, because it might not come across as you want it to."
Thank you very much. So what you decide during your time on school committee will definitely affect students of tomorrow. How far into the future do you look to see the impact you could make as a school committee member?
I think that's a great question, because when I first joined the school committee five years ago, when I first ran for the school committee five years ago, it was because I wanted to be involved with my children's education, and albeit a little bit selfish in that regard, saying, "I want to be involved." I mean, it's the same reason I joined the PTO, and it's the same reason I, you know, went on school field trips, because you want to be involved. You want to find something that kind of connects you to what your children are doing. But then, once you do get involved, you get to see the whole picture, and you get to see that it's not, obviously, just my children's education that I'm responsible for, I'm responsible for everyone's education. And even though none of my children yet are interested in playing an instrument, it was important for us to bring back the instrumental music program for Kingston Intermediate School. And, you know, I, I was in the band for many years, growing up, and I just thought, "Oh, man, if we do this now, then in a couple of years, my kids can take part in the band or get to learn how to play an instrument, and that's great." And then the time came, and they were just like, "Yeah, right, Mom, like, I'm all set, like, I don't want to, I don't want to do that right now." But at the same time, it's great to see what the band program has done. They just had a recent concert at the high school, and I look at some of the pictures that came across social media especially, and I'm saying, "This program is growing. You're seeing the direct impact of a decision to bring back instrumental band," which was a little bit controversial at the time, because it's, it's a program that needs to be sustained. It's a budget item. And to see the benefits of a program like that, and to see the benefits of having a fully-funded budget, or feeling like, "Okay, the needs of our children are being met," then you get a, you know, in turn, like, the sixth-grade celebration, or the sixth-grade graduation, excuse me, up in, prior to the pandemic, they had a sixth-grade graduation every year, and school committee members were invited to hand out citizenship awards. And it's just really great to kind of see the positives of being involved with the committee, and seeing the real upsides of the schools here in Kingston.
Thank you, thank you. So you now have two minutes for your closing remarks, and you can touch upon any subjects you feel you haven't been able to talk about yet, tell, tell viewers and residents a little bit more about yourself, and then share your reasons for your candidacy.
Okay, well, I'd like to read one, if that's okay. I'll try not to read it, but at the same time, I just don't want to stumble over too many of my words.
Absolutely.
So, "Hello, Kingston. My name's Jean Coleman, and I'm one of the candidates for the Kingston seat on the Silver Lake Regional School Committee on Saturday, April 23rd. I believe that my experience, knowledge of our district, and dedication to all children and families make me the most qualified candidate for this board. Over the past five years, I have served as a member of the Kingston School Committee, and I'm currently the vice chair. I have served on the Health and Safety Subcommittee, Negotiation Subcommittee, Administrative Review Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee, the Joint 31 Union Subcommittee. I have been on the Search Committee for three principals, our superintendent and our assistant superintendent, and I've worked alongside our administration and the district office, our school administration, and my colleagues on both the Kingston School Committee and the Joint 31 Union Subcommittee, to advocate the needs for all students in the Silver Lake District. Throughout this time, I believe we have passed fair and balanced budgets each year. We have strengthened our special education programs within Kingston, and brought back instrumental music at Kingston Intermediate School. I chose to run for school committee five years ago because I believe in the value of public education. Our five children are in Kingston Elementary, Kingston Intermediate, and our son is now at the middle school. I have learned the complexity of our district as both a parent and as a school committee member, and believe that my understanding of our district brings a strong voice to the table. We have wonderful schools in our district, and I truly believe we all want the best education possible for all children, as they deserve no less. If elected, I will continue my term with Kingston, and feel it would benefit our district to have a connection between the Kingston School Committee and the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. Due to my experience on the Kingston School Committee, I can hit the ground running immediately. Thank you for your support, and I urge you to please vote on Saturday, April 23rd. Thank you."
Thank you, Jean, for participating in this interview, and also, we wish you the best of luck in your campaign and in the election.
Thank you very much.
Today, we're speaking with Amy Courtwright, one of the three candidates for the Silver Lake Regional School Committee in the Kingston Town election. Amy, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
I'm glad you could be here in the studio. We're really excited to be back in studio with all of our election candidates.
Yeah, Zoom gets a little energy-draining sometimes, I feel like.
So it's, it's great to be in person together. Let's start right off today with, what do you, what is your belief that the role of a school committee member is?
So as a professional educator, I, I know how much training and dedication goes into the art and the craft of teaching. We, everyone in Massachusetts has to have a master's degree after they've been teaching five years. You can't continue teaching unless you get a master's degree. We have to have 150 hours of professional development minimum to continue our careers. So I really feel like educators, that, we all put a lot into this, and so I feel like the school committee's role is to support that, not to micromanage. I think we've seen a lot of that around the country, with people coming in and demanding that teachers do X, Y, or Z. A lot of what people seem to be demanding, and this is other parts of the country, I'm not seeing this in Massachusetts, but, you know, things like, "Are lesson plans available?" That's already taking place. If you go to my school website, you can look at any one of my math lessons, I can access any of my kids' stuff online. So I feel like that's another part of what a school committee does, is to communicate that, like, to be the liaison between the families and the educators, and to, you know, inform people, "Okay, this is, this is what's available, this is what we do, this is what the law says, this is our role." The main legal role of the school committee is to hire the administrators, and to hire the best administrators we can to support the teachers and make sure the schools are running smoothly. And then the other big thing is, we're the ones who negotiate the contract with the teachers, so I think it's really important. There is a teacher shortage nationwide, being able to provide the kind of working conditions that attract the best teachers we can get for our kids, and again, to continue supporting the schools in any way we can.
Excellent, thank you. How do you view the role of committee members to balance the needs of their individual town with the needs of other towns within the district, particularly if the needs are not necessarily in line with one another, especially regarding budget decisions or discussions?
I think the biggest thing is communication and respect. So one of the things I like, my older child is a sophomore in the high school right now, and so her best friends are actually from Halifax, and so I get to talk to a lot of Halifax parents. I've got a lot of personal friends in Plimpton, so having those communications and those connections. Ultimately, though, my role is to represent Kingston, so for the communication piece, while I, I do think respectful communication is important with the other towns, it's also important to primarily make sure that I'm listening to the Kingston residents and what their needs are, and then to represent that to the board in a respectful way, a respectful manner.
Excellent, thank you. Due to the rising costs of attending college, many students are looking to join the trades after high school. What are your thoughts on growing and/or expanding the CTE program to address this need?
I love the CTE program. My own daughter's not in it, she's a very, very academic kind of person, but her two best friends are in the CTE program. What I've seen from the CTE program right now, they offer a few specific programs, and I know that non-CTE kids have a very limited ability to get into those, and I understand some of that is just balancing the needs of the program versus having the outsiders come in and take classes. Obviously, it all depends on the budget, but it would be great to be able to expand that, allow kids to look into other options. Right now, I know health is one of the biggest ones, and I love that program. Actually, I think this is true in all of the programs, that the students graduate licensed in some form of trade, but with the option to continue on to college, giving them that flexibility, but also the flexibility to earn while they're a college student. For example, the health students, they're all CNAs when they graduate. They can get a really lucrative side job while they're attending college if they choose to continue on to a two- or four-year program. There are other programs I know that we don't offer. I don't know what the finances would be for those, though, so that's something I don't really feel qualified to comment on quite yet, with, I don't want to make a blanket statement, "Oh, yeah, let's add plumbing," without knowing what the budgetary needs for that would be. Anytime you add a full-time position, you're looking at, you know, $50,000 to $100,000 just for one teacher's salary right there, and then when you have to implement a whole program with administrative needs and certification and equipment, that's a lot of money. And then when we have to consider, everyone's hurting right now financially, tax burden on the citizens is going to be a big deal. So I think anytime we propose a new program, we have to stop and think about, "How are we going to pay for this?"
Thank you very much. How would you manage decision-making when there really is no simple or clean-cut decision to be made, knowing that whatever you decide, potentially half of the constituents will be disappointed or in complete disagreement with you?
Yeah, that's one thing I feel like, being a high school teacher, I do that every day. Every single decision I make, if I decide to add another day to review before a test, the kids who are ready are annoyed, they just want to get it over with. So I, I think, again, I keep going back to the same things, compassion and communication, understanding that feelings can be valid on both sides of an issue, and there's no way to make everybody happy. I explain this to my students every day, they'll complain, "Well, why do we have this policy in place?" And there's usually some underlying reason, it's like, "Okay, this isn't great, but given all the alternatives, this is the best compromise we could reach in this particular situation." So I think that's something that carries through, no matter what the decision is. At the end of the day, all I can promise is to do my best, and to listen to people, and to try to consider all angles before I make a decision, and then, you know, my vote goes with everybody else's vote.
Okay. With the challenges of social media in today's world, how will you respond to or manage seeing debate on social media platforms where decisions made by public employees are often discussed or criticized?
So what I've noticed, and actually, I was just talking to my husband about this this afternoon, he brought up a contentious local story that will remain unnamed, and I don't think it's actually even hit the local area yet, it was from out of state, but it involves the South Shore. And I said, "Just do me a favor, don't post this on social media, let someone else be the one to dive in." This is another area where being a public employee and being out there already, I already have to watch what I say and kind of keep out of it, and what I find that I do, if I start to feel personally affected by what I see or by what I read, I turn it off, I get a cup of tea, and I go knit. If it's something that I feel passionately about, I make sure, I'm probably one of the only people I know, I proofread my social media posts for grammar and spelling, and then sometimes I'll ask another family member, "Does this sound okay? Does this get the tone across?" Because I feel like it's so easy to just knee-jerk, forget that there's a person on the other end of the post. I know I've seen that from other people a lot, where there's really, truly hateful things that are said, and then when you meet the person in person, they're a lovely person, and it's just, I think, forgetting, that's, that's another person on the other side of that. That's somebody's kid, that's somebody's mom, that's somebody's dad, somebody's teacher. So that's, you know, being a teacher in a nearby town, I grew up in Duxbury, so I kind of am involved in a lot of local communities in different ways, and I see what goes on in the town groups, and it's just like, "Okay, I'm just, I'm going to read what's there just to see what's there, but I am not going to comment unless I have something helpful to say."
Thank you, and that has been a constant conversation of late.
It really is, and if I can just say one more thing, there have been times where sometimes I don't regret speaking up, if it's something that I really feel like, "You know what, I might get flack for this," but I have to stand up for, usually, it's when it's the kids. So like, if I've seen somebody say something hateful to a child, or make a snarky comment about a kid, I'm probably going to speak up, but it's going to come from a place, I feel like if what you're doing, whether it's online or offline, is rooted in your core values and is coming from a place of love and compassion, then you won't regret it, even if someone pushes back a little bit and says, "Oh," you know. If you did it for the right reason, and you stand by what you said, then it'll stand.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to interrupt about that, though.
No, that's fine, that's fine. What you decide during your time on the school committee will affect the students of tomorrow. How far into the future do you look to see the impact you could be making as a school committee member?
So short-term, I always think about, the students that we have in the regional district are grade seven through 12, so that's, that's a six-year term for a kid entering seventh grade in 2022. They're there until 2028, even if I'm no longer there, assuming I get in in the first place. So I'm thinking about that seventh grader and their journey through the middle school and the high school, but also, as a career educator, I'm really thinking bigger picture. I always think kind of in 13-year spans. The kindergarten are entering at Dennett, or Halifax Elementary, or KES, you know, they're, they're going to be ours before we know it. I had curriculum night in Norwell, that's where I teach, last night, and as we're sitting there, a colleague of mine, we said, "Hey, that kid in the back corner, did he go here?" It was- It was the much older sibling of an upcoming freshman. He graduated 10 years ago, and he was back with his much younger brother, and we chatted. And so, you know, I remember him as a freshman. So now we're talking about like a 14-year span with these students. So I'm, I'm always thinking sort of short-term, what are our needs this year? How are we going to navigate, you know, what are the challenges? With COVID, it's been like month-to-month, week-to-week, you know, what's best for our students now? But then there's also, okay, how's the year going to play out? How's this incoming freshman's four-year high school experience going to play out? But then, how's this incoming kindergartner's education going to play out, and how's their future going to play out? So I think you're thinking about it both short-term and long-term at the same time.
Thank you very much. So you now have a couple of minutes to make your own remarks, to address anything you feel that wasn't brought up that you would like to talk about as, as somebody who would like to be on the district school committee, and also to tell people a little bit more about you.
Okay. So I'll start with, I guess, am I looking right here?
Sure, yes.
So I'll start with a little bit about myself, and then I'll go into some of the things that I think are important for any school committee member and kind of education in general. So I am, with the exception of attending college in Montreal, I went to McGill, with the exception of that, I'm a lifelong South Shore resident. I grew up in Duxbury, and after we got married, my husband and I moved to Kingston. We've been there since 2004. We love Kingston. People are like, oh, do you want to move back to Duxbury? No, I love Kingston. I love the friends we've made. My kids have had a wonderful experience in the schools. We've, we've just been thrilled pretty much the whole way, especially, I need to give a shout out to our music program, both of my kids, well, I'm a music nerd myself. Both of my kids are huge music nerds, they both play several instruments and sing, and they just, they love their music teachers. So yeah, I really do love Kingston, pretty much everything about it. I am an avid crafter, I mentioned knitting before, I knit and cross-stitch pretty much every day, it's how I relax. One of my friends calls it the only form of fidgeting that's become socially acceptable. And I've been a teacher, this is my 21st year teaching, which makes me feel ridiculously old. Before I was a teacher, I spent two years as an AmeriCorps member in Brockton. I did my student teaching in Boston, and I've taught in Avon, Duxbury, and I've been in Norwell for 16 years now. So I've kind of seen, in terms of education, I've kind of seen it all. I worked in daycare as a high school student and a college student, so I've seen the little kids. My AmeriCorps was an educational experience in an elementary school in Brockton, and then I've taught for Kaplan, so that's middle and high school students, and now I teach high school. And I've just recently started teaching college courses as well. So I feel that that perspective, someone who has been in education really at every level and seen, you know, okay, what have the elementary and middle school kids experienced as they come into us at the regional district? Where are they going from here? I feel that that's probably the biggest strength I bring. Also, I have worked on curriculum development pretty much every year of my career. I've served on administrator search committees, accreditation evaluation teams in other districts around the state of Massachusetts. So that extensive experience, I think, helps me to, to really understand, as a school committee member, how are other districts operating? What are things we might not have thought about before we make a decision or take a vote? So I hope people will appreciate that when they consider me. Curriculum, I feel, has become a real hot-button issue, and I don't really want to get into hot-button takes on anything or be too contentious, but I think it is important to know that the curriculum in Massachusetts is set at the state level. The state DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they're the ones who really set the curriculum standards. It's up to each individual district to develop a district curriculum map that aligns with the state's standards. The school committee doesn't really do that. We approve the curriculum maps, but ultimately, it's up to the, the teachers, the educators to be the ones to say, okay. For example, I teach Algebra II, it's an MCAS-tested subject, 10th graders. We have, I have to sit down with all my colleagues who teach Algebra II, and we have to say, okay, we need to cover X, Y, and Z by the end of the school year. How long is it going to take us to do systems of linear equations? How long is it going to take us to cover polynomials and radicals? And then figure out how to get that all in before the test in May, and how to make it meaningful for the kids. So the curriculum is just what we teach, the lesson plans are how we teach it. And every teacher worth their salt, I, I'm already today going back over pretty much every single thing I said to every single student. Was that too harsh? Did I move too quickly? Did I move too slowly? Did I give this kid enough review time? Did I give them too much help and maybe they could have figured it out on their own? So that's something that changes day to day. A school committee member isn't in there in the classroom with the teacher doing that, where they're in that support role, making sure that when the administrators come to us with the budget and say, here's what we need, and then we say, okay, how are we going to pay for this? What might we have to cut? Where can we fit this in? That's another area where I feel like my particular subject area that I teach is math. I'm a math nerd, I'm wearing a math nerd dress. And so I feel that that facility with numbers is another thing that I'd like the people of Kingston to know about me, that, you know, I'm really good at math. So hopefully, that'll translate into being able to help craft a budget that, it's not going to make everybody, nothing makes everybody happy, as you said earlier, but it'll, you know, meet as many needs as possible and keep as many people happy as possible. And I guess that's basically it about me.
Well, Amy, thank you so much for joining us here today, we really appreciate it and participating in the interview. We wish you the best of luck during your campaign and at the election.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's, it's a pleasure to have all of the candidates in. And for our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, pacTV.org/elections for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please make your choices heard by voting in the election on Saturday, April 23rd. Thank you and good day. Today, we're speaking with Michael Chikane, one of the three candidates for the Silverlake Regional School Committee in Kingston Town election. Mike, thanks for joining us today.
Hi, Donna, thanks for having me.
Well, we're glad you can be part of this, and let's just jump right in with the first question. What do you believe is the role of a school committee member?
I feel that, you know, before getting into this race, I wasn't really clear on what the school committee member's role was, but now I am very clear on what the duties of the school committee member is, you know, being involved with the hiring of a superintendent, reviewing the budget, addressing policies for the district. All of those items, I feel, are critical to making sure that we're moving forward in the school here. You know, before getting into the race, there was a lot of, a lot of area of ambiguity for myself. I wasn't sure, you know, is the school committee going to do, you know, certain tasks versus other tasks, where are they going to fall in? But speaking to current school members, school committee members, I was able to get that clarity, and knowing where the school committee members, you know, fall into the role of moving, you know, the various departments, working with the staff, the faculty, and also being an advocate for all of the families in the, in the community, not only for Kingston, although that, that's what this position is for, for Kingston, but also working with the Plimpton and Halifax school committee members, making sure that whatever decisions we make is for the benefit of all three towns.
Thank you. How do you view the role of committee members to balance the needs of their individual town with the needs of other towns within the district, particularly if the needs are not in line with one another, especially in regard to budget decisions?
I think that's, that's a very difficult line to, to, you know, make sure you don't cross, and look at only your town's needs. We need to make sure that both of Kingston's needs and Halifax and Plimpton's needs are being addressed. It is difficult when we look at the, the budget constraints for the various towns. Sometimes there might be shortfalls within various towns. I know for now, there is a shortfall in one of the towns, but we need to work together to make sure that we're not leaving any of the students or any particular of the, any particular program behind. We want to make sure that everybody's propped up together, and that might result in some cuts to other community programs within the Halifax or Kingston or Plimpton programs. Wherever there is an opportunity to, you know, to provide funding, we should look at that and try to prop up the, the other towns.
Thank you. Due to the rising costs of attending college, many students are looking to join the trades after high school. What are your thoughts on growing and/or expanding the CTE program to address this need?
I am all for expanding the CTE program. I know personally, I have used them in years past. I've taken my car to the automotive portion where they've done my brakes for the culinary department, you know, their bread pudding was amazing when, when we had it, so I am all for it. I think those are skills that really can't be taught in the, you know, conventional classroom, and are things that I feel that, you know, the children need as they're getting older. You know, college might not be an option for everybody, you know, whether it's a two-year or four-year college, and, you know, there are astronomical costs associated with attending a private institution. I've seen recently, it was over $80,000 a year, which is, you know, out of reach for some, some family members. So having these skills to fall back on and, and make a career out of, a very well-paying career, you know, especially in the carpentry or automotive business, I think is something that we need to promote, make sure that a lot of the students are aware of, and, you know, try to bring as many additional students into it. You know, it is something that, like I said, is not taught in the conventional classroom, so we need to make sure that everybody's aware of it, of these programs, and, and of course, have the community involved, try to get the experience out there for the students. Like I said, with, you know, the automotive department, making sure that all of the, the community members know that they could bring their car in and get some, some minor repairs done, they could go pick up some food, they could get some light carpentry done, I see them around town. So it is a great program, and I, and I feel like we need to continue to expand it as much as we can.
Do you have ideas on ways you would like to see it expanded?
I would think more disciplines would be great, you know, just making sure we have carpentry, automotive, culinary, I believe, you know, electrical and plumbing would be great, all of the trades would be, you know, something that we should look to expand, if not already present. Those are things that, you know, will give all of the, the students a leg up once they graduate high school from, from Silverlake High School. They could jump right in, be an apprentice, and, and, you know, really make a good living there. I feel that these, again, are things that, you know, some students may not be, you know, looking forward to, you know, four years of college or two years of college, because they would rather work with their hands, they, you know, they like building stuff. And there's different types of people out there, so I think we need to promote those types of, of skills within our, our student body.
Thank you. How would you manage decision-making when there's no simple, clear-cut decision to be made, knowing that whatever you decide, some constituents are going to be disappointed or in complete disagreement?
That's a difficult part of this, this seat that I'm running for, especially, you know, being on the regional committee, you'd have to deal with not only your own town, but also the other two towns, making sure that you can't make decisions that are just going to benefit your, your one town, you know, Kingston here. I think it's very important to make sure that all of the other parties from, from the various towns or departments, whether it's in, all within the same, you know, the high school or middle school, that we're all, all of them are brought to the table, so to speak, and to make sure that we all understand what our end goal is. You know, if we lay out what we want to achieve at the end, I think it's a little easier to, to go around, address where we need to make a little bit of, of a cut here and there. And if everybody sees that everybody's making a little bit of a sacrifice, then I think it's, it's a little more palatable to, to, you know, to offer something up for the greater good of the, of the school community.
Thank you. With the challenges of social media in today's world, how will you respond to or manage seeing debate on social media platforms where decisions are made by public employees are often discussed or criticized?
You have to have a thick skin for that, if, if it's about you, or if it's about somebody you may know, or in, in another department. I think, you know, everybody wants to, you know, be more vocal on social media, and, you know, there's, there's not as much of a filter, I feel, versus speaking to somebody in person, which is something that, you know, unfortunately, has, has been the trend for, for a number of years, ever since the rise of social media. I think we need to, you know, be able to step away and not look at social media as a way to defend policies or debate policies, or even convey what types of way, you know, a department person is leaning. You know, with, with all of these positions within town, we need to make decisions based off of the facts, everything that's presented to us, and, you know, whatever the decision ends up being, based off of those facts, you can't please everybody, and you have to know that you're making the best decision for your constituents, for the student body, faculty, for the staff, especially for, you know, on the regional school committee. And, and you just need to, you know, have the trust that you have made the right decision. So it is difficult, you have to have that thick skin, but I think it's, it's doable if you're just, you know, you're sure you made the, the right decision based off of the facts.
Thank you. Now, Michael, what you decide during your time on the school committee will affect the students of tomorrow. How far into the future do you look to see the impact you could make as a school committee member?
Well, my, my children are currently at KES and KIS, so that's where I'm looking right now. I'm looking for the next five to 10 years until they graduate from Silverlake High School. I want to make sure that whatever policies are implemented now will be there for the school to prosper in those years and beyond. I'm not looking for this to be a, a seat that I'm running for just for three years, but probably for the long term, where I could see all of the changes being made, if there are any changes that are needed. Obviously, until I get in and, you know, you know, if elected, I want to make sure that, you know, all the decisions are made based off of what is presented. So I, I want to make sure that, you know, for these next 10 or so years, looking into the future, the school remains on a, a good path to be inclusive, to expand programs such as the CTE, as we mentioned, and that there are new programs that are, that may be, you know, born when my children end up going to the middle school and eventually the high school. So that's really the reason I'm running for this position, knowing that my children in three or four years will be in the midst of middle school, and will be able to, you know, be part of something that, if elected, I would have had a, you know, a hand in.
Thank you so much. Now you're going to have a couple of minutes for closing remarks, or to address anything that wasn't brought up that you'd like to speak to. Things such as, you know, telling viewers a little bit more about you, but also things that you're particularly passionate about when it comes to school committee.
All right, thank you, Donna. Yes, you know, a little bit about myself for those who are not aware. I did move to Kingston in 2016 with my wife Erin, where we decided to make a home here after wanting to be closer to family. You know, my, my children, Andrew, who is nine at KIS, and Daniel, who's seven at KES, have had a wonderful time so far at schools, grown strong friendships, and that is something that I saw in my nieces and nephew, as they've worked through the, all of the, the schools, KES, KIS, the middle school and high school, they've grown strong bonds and relationships that have continued for years after their graduation. You know, those, those are the reasons why I'm running for this, for this position, seeing that sense of community that the school has provided to them. You know, ever since I moved here, I've tried to volunteer in my time to try to be part of the community and of the schools, being a, a parent helper in the classroom, a KES library volunteer, being on the Board of Trustees as a treasurer, treasurer for the Kingston Public Library, and even coaching sports for my children on the weekend. So I try to be involved both- So I try to be involved both academically and athletically for, for my children and a lot of the other children in, in the community. So I just enjoy giving back, and I feel that this is a, a good opportunity to continue giving back to the community. Professionally, I am a project manager, working on employee benefits projects, trying to bring together a lot of different groups, something I feel that would be a benefit to this position with the various departments, the various town representatives comprising the regional school committee. I think it's very important to be able to partner with others, to be able to delegate among the various departments and make sure that we're all working together towards a common goal. You know, as mentioned, you know, we need to make sure that we're not leaving any town behind and any, any program or group of students behind, and we need to ensure that we're all in this together. So I feel like, you know, all of my volunteer professional experience makes me an ideal candidate for this position. I have a vested interest in the prosperity long-term for the, the, all of the schools within Kingston, and that is why I'm running for the regional school committee seat. You know, I ask if, you know, if it is myself that you vote for or another one of the qualified candidates on April 23rd, to just please go out and vote, just make sure that your voices are heard and, and make sure that we have all of the right people and, you know, those who are passionate about the school in those seats. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election.
Thank you.
For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, pacTV.org/elections, for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please make your choices heard by voting in the election on Saturday, April 23rd. Thank you and good day.